Welcome to the Planning Board meeting, the June 21st Planning Board meeting at 6:32. Today on the agenda, we have been a review minutes, elect Planning Board representatives to the Community Preservation Committee and Berkshire Regional Planning, update on the status of transferring the LPOD to the Concom, and we have a draft document to look at, and then an update on accessory dwelling units, and Marie has an announcement.
This is just a reminder or information on, this is the 75th anniversary of the Stockbridge Bowl Association. So they're doing a variety of programs this summer. The first will be Saturday, and it's at the library. It's an exhibit on activities in the bowl, and there'll be people, Carl is one of our exhibitors that has found some great pictures of the boating club, you know, there'll be people representing the fishing and the zebra muscle committees and Camp Mackinac and, you know, just all of the kinds of activities that the bowl, that the bowl has. So it is after the library closes, it's from 3:00 to 4:00, and you'll get a chance to wander around and talk to people who have these pictures, like Carl will explain his pictures to you, and, and it should be just, it's a, it's a real informal just learning about the things that have gone on in the bowl in the past. So I'd like to invite you to that. There's other activities, one in July on the bowl with rides out to the island and a parade around the island, and our firemen are doing their rescue boat demonstration kinds of things. And then in August, there's a hike in Bullard Woods with Bob Leverett, who is the guru of old trees. And there's a bunch of old hemlocks and other trees in Bullard Woods that are, that are registered as old growth forest. So just reminding you, Saturday at 3:00 in the library for a fun visit with the bowl.
Thanks, Marie.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Should we go on to the minutes? Has everyone had a chance to review the seven minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion or comments, or?
Motion to accept.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good. All right. At the last meeting, we forgot to elect our representatives to the Community Preservation Committee and Berkshire Regional Planning Commission. Now, Nancy has been doing Berkshire Regional Planning Commission. I don't know, she's not here, so I don't know if she wants to continue doing that.
I would like to nominate her if she still isn't. As long as she's not here.
Nomination.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Let her know.
Community Preservation Committee, I'd like to nominate Gary.
Gary has been on, right?
Yeah.
Yep, Gary has been.
Second. I'd like to say.
Any other nominations, or? Are we all good with that?
You up for it, Gary?
Oh, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay. So let's see, that was us.
I didn't hear. Seconded?
Yeah. Marie seconded, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I seconded that one, yeah. Thanks.
Yeah, very quickly.
All right. So update on the status of transferring the Lake and Pond overlay district bylaw to the Concom. We're going to have to pass on that. I did contact town council, but I haven't heard back from her yet. So nothing good on that. Okay. Draft document, actually, I'm going to share this out, so give me a moment to pull it up. Okay, so this, can you see that?
Yeah.
So this is basically just a framework within which to conduct public hearings. Public hearings are, it's a legal process, and this is something that Mike and I did up, and the idea here is to just streamline the process, and also because it is a legal process, to make sure that we're not leaving ourselves vulnerable to legal challenges. So does anybody have any questions about that? It's pretty straightforward, I think, but.
And I think, I don't know if you sent it or Jennifer sent it, but I had a copy in my email.
Yeah.
Went over it.
Yep. So I mean, it basically just starts with, and Mike is here, you know, with Wayne reading the legal notice, and then opening the hearing, and then there's some guidelines there, and then the applicant or their team present questions from the board, those speaking in favor, those in opposition, and this one here, you know, we close the evidentiary portion of the public, of the hearing, and move to deliberation by the board. If there isn't a second, that would be unusual, but it might be that someone has outstanding questions, in which case we try to resolve those, or if we can't, you know, maybe somebody wants expert testimony or something like that, then we would schedule, we would continue, continue the evidentiary portion of the hearing, and we would set a, we would set a date to be continued. So that's, you know, I think it's pretty straightforward, but I just wanted to, do you have a special permit coming up? So I just wanted to go over that. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Mike, did you want to add anything?
No, I think you went through it pretty thorough. You know, this is just a basic guideline. Obviously, you can always be tripped up by something that can be brought forward by an applicant, but as Kate did say, you know, if at any point you do, that's the time when you consider continuing the hearing, whether you want to bring in legal counsel to get an answer to a question, whether it's just the applicant needs to give you more information or any of those. But it is good to practice, at all times to practice, the procedures. I mean, I like to, I know some people say, well, whether formal or informal, you could still be informal, but you should be informal, but still following the basic procedures. And if you get those down for the easy ones, when you get to something that's really difficult, controversial, or something else, it'll just make the process work that much better if you're just used to that setup.
Okay, thank you. Let's hope the next one is not controversial and is easy. All right, so, nothing on that? Okay, that's, that's easy. Okay, so I think that brings us to an update on accessory dwelling units. So I worked a little bit with Cara, and I've done some, some reading about accessory dwelling units, and I've looked at other town bylaws. I've got some phone calls out to people yet, but it's a little bit complicated in that it ties to short-term rentals. So it's really something that is not necessarily easily controlled, and short-term rentals are, well, we don't know exactly. I mean, we know they're over 100, I think, in Stockbridge. I think I heard 160, somewhere around there. But one issue is that with the short-term rentals, that's taking up some of that missing middle housing in Stockbridge. So like if you look at Old Stockbridge Road, or, you know, some of these properties that are on major streets or routes in Stockbridge are properties that potentially could go to, you know, to entry-level families and so on, but they're, they're getting picked up by short-term rentals, and I think Liz could probably speak to this a little bit more. So I did, I also spoke with, there's, you know, there are challenges in terms of enforcement and verifying. So because of this connection with short-term rentals, I looked, I had a conversation with Patrick about it, and what he has.
Patrick's?
Yeah, okay, good. Hi, Patrick. So what is on the select board meeting for this Thursday is, Patrick's interested in doing a housing assessment, and I think that, you know, what we're, what we should do is, we're sort of jumping the gun a little bit, and I'm thinking that, you know, Liz, you're, you're interested in this, which I think is great, as a new board member, I think is just a really good thing for you to work on. So apparently Liz is interested in working on this on a committee that Patrick's interested in forming, and what, what we would do is, we would work in coordination with the select board to assess, you know, do a housing assessment. So we have a better sense of what our actual needs are, because I'm not sure that I see accessory dwelling units as actually doing anything for our residents here in Stockbridge. You know, given that Cara told me that in terms of affordable housing, that's really just, you know, not going to work for the reasons that you brought up, Wayne, and unless we went to doing more than one unit, which is something that I'd like us to, you know, decide tonight, so that we can have that behind us, if it's just one unit, then 50% affordable housing is not, you can't do it. So, you know, so that's a decision that we should make, and I'd like to talk a little bit about that. But, you know, what, my recommendation is that we coordinate with the select board, we do the housing assessment, and we do this in tandem with looking at our short-term rental bylaw, so that, you know, we're taking a more holistic view, and we're coming up with a pro, you know, something that will be a good fit for Stockbridge and a good fit for Stockbridge residents, and not, you know, for people who are just coming in and snapping up some of these properties. So I'd be interested to hear from, you know, everyone on your thoughts about that.
How long have we had the short-term, I'm sorry, excuse me?
I just, Wayne had to stand up, so I'll just.
Is short-term rental always considered like Airbnb?
They're different companies and.
So there's just, they're different.
It's a category.
Providers, but it's basically an Airbnb-type setup.
It's Airbnb, Vimeo, I think there's some others.
It could be, but it could also be your house. But a short-term rental is based on the number of days.
And then, secondly, a housing assessment, what will that specifically tell us?
So what I'm interested in learning about is, what is our actual need here in town? Because we have all these people, all of us sitting here, who have paid into the system here for, for years, decades. And so what I'm interested in finding out is, you know, what are the needs of people living here? What are the needs of people working here? What are the needs of employers? You know, what, what do we actually, you know, what are the properties that we have? But I think, since Patrick is here, I sort of, Patrick, can you hear me?
You're muted.
Hey, I'd much rather hear what you guys think we should be looking at. And obviously, Jamie's on this, and Chuck haven't had a chance to weigh in yet either. So why don't you guys discuss?
Okay. Oh, I didn't realize, okay, I didn't realize that Jamie, Jamie had hopped on. So, yep, I got it. So I guess, you know, that's, that's what I'm thinking, that, you know, but I'd be interested to hear from you all.
How, how do you do an assessment like that? What, what is the process?
So we.
Is it another survey kind of thing? What is the?
It would involve a survey? So when we did, were you involved with the municipal vulnerability preparedness?
Well, I wasn't involved in it, but I was here and did, you know.
Did you?
Participated in the survey.
Yeah. So it would, you know, it would be something, as I understand it, it would be, there would be a survey, and this is not some.
Different from that one. I mean, that one had a lot of stuff.
But it's also to update it. I think it's more to come into 2022, because needs change as, as the population, as the population.
Yeah, we've had a lot of.
Had a big population shift in the last couple of years, thanks to COVID. And, you know, some people chose to stay, some people left, and so we do have a little bit of a lag.
But that's how you would assess, is some kind of a survey of the people?
A survey, and probably, I mean, with a municipal vulnerability preparedness program, there were also meetings, and, you know, different people attended those and weighed in, and, you know, so I think they, they use, you know, they're sort of, they're looking at data, they're looking at how the town is, oh, who's here, is it the graphics, right? And, and then they're, they're doing a survey, and then their public outreach, I would imagine.
I think, I'm sure that.
Yeah. So Liz, I mean, have you given some thought to this? Do you want to?
Well, you know, I've spoken a little bit with Mike and with Patrick, and really, we want to get the people in town involved, because we want to know, it's not just us deciding, it's not just the selectmen, we want to know from the broad base. I think, you know, just knowing people and knowing businesses around here, and seeing that they're not opening for lunches, or whatever it is that they can't, because they don't have people here to work anymore, we've got to start looking at that very seriously, because I'm watching not just this town, but lots of towns having really hard time keeping businesses open. So what do we do to, you know, not just invite people back, but make it so that they can afford to be here? I met somebody the other night who's living in his mother's, you know, basement apartment, because that's all he could find.
Yeah.
Would rather not. But, you know, so we should be looking at those things.
Yeah. So I guess, I just, you know, if I thought that accessory dwelling units were going to solve these problems, I would push it, but I don't, you know, based on.
Mike, what are you finding that has you turned the other way on it?
The enforceability, the ability to verify, and then the connection to short-term, short-term rentals.
You think it'll be abused in that way?
I think it's going to be very difficult to monitor, potentially, and, you know, as I think Mike talked about it a little bit at the last meeting, I don't, you know, I think it would be good to have a better understanding of the town, a snapshot right now, and have a better understanding of how it connects with short-term rentals, so that, you know, look, people may want to go ahead, knowing they may want to say, okay, we think the risk is worth it. But I think we can do better to understand the actual need.
But we can still, people can still do this if they choose to.
The one thing, they can, it's still in our bylaw, so, you know, it's not as if it doesn't exist. And one thing that I, I might do, you know, depending on whether Mike can just give me access to the WordDoc, I can just fix the administrative thing that makes it kind of difficult to read, and I can do that in probably five minutes. So, you know, just so it's clear. So yes, it is there, and I just think, you know, this is something that we should take a little, a little care with.
May I make a statement?
And since, yeah, one second. You know, since, you know, because I just learned that Patrick and that Liz, who's on our board, it's just sort of a natural, to me, it seems like a natural thing for us to collaborate on. So, John?
Yes?
Go ahead.
I am on this, kind of a rant when it comes to the Conservation Commission, to put some teeth into what it is we do. And by that, I mean, when people are in violation of their, you know, notice of intent, and we discover it, to begin fining them, and not just, you know, a dollar or two a day, I mean, something serious. And I think that if you're going to have a bylaw that involves short-term rentals, I think you need something which is going to get people to stop and take a look at what the consequences are of not registering their short-term rental. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, John.
I mean, on the table of use, there's a certain number of, you know, options in accessory dwell, accessory uses that are approved. I mean, do those, would those require registration?
So currently, in our table of uses, to do an accessory dwelling, it's by special permit of the Planning Board. So now, in my 10 years on its forge, we've never once had one, so that tells you something right there. But.
Or they've been done without a permit.
But I mean, but I mean, but it says, it says right here on the table of use. I mean, you know, basically, in any, in any zoning district, you know, if you want to rent out a room to a person, without a kitchen.
Mm-hmm.
You know?
I think you can do that, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can do that. Yep.
Excuse me.
Unless you're serving the meals.
No, they should be serving it. Josh, did you have a?
Like I said, the accessory dwelling, does that have to be attached to the main house?
It can be, but it's up to the, it's a decision of the.
So what would be a maximum size accessory dwelling on a typical, one, two-acre property, square footage?
That would be a decision of the Planning Board and the town, really.
So I, you could literally get into numbers where you have literally, what would be two houses on a piece of property?
You could get into some, some challenging numbers, for sure.
And then, if you think the house is, is affordable now, a person who's selling off one house has to try to buy, maybe if it comes up high in property with two houses on it.
You have to think about, think it through. So, yeah. Mike, did you have anything?
No, I actually, I do agree with what John said, and that's, I think I've stated it before, we got to be careful whenever we're creating anything to make sure it's verifiable and enforceable, because if it's not, it, they can become very problematic.
And it doesn't become some sort of Trojan horse for creating additional density in neighborhoods that, you know, we really don't encourage that in.
Right. I mean, I just want to do the best we can to get, come up with something that is a really good fit for Stockbridge, so that we, you know, hold on to.
Do we have a square footage parameter in the existing?
In the existing, the.
800?
The minimum is 300, and the maximum is 500.
500?
Yeah. I mean, it was clear that the intent was that this be done such that it's subordinate to.
Existing house.
Yeah, yeah. So.
Yeah, was it a size, a percentage of the size of the, like, how to be?
Well, we, except for family, it's like, I'd get a 10,000 square foot.
Yeah, well, that's true. That's ridiculous in my house.
It stops, it stops, it stops becoming affordable.
Pretty sizable accessory.
So, yeah, and you know, when I think of some of the people I know in town, who are in their 80s and so on, as Mike pointed out, you know, do you see them putting in addition on their home at this point in their lives to make, you know, their, make things more affordable? And absolutely not.
You don't? If a, if a child's in that house, and the child can take care of the big house, and the, and you can have a mother-in-law apartment, you don't see that happening?
No, I think when, you know, I know of people, I'm just saying, I know of two people who I know are probably financially could definitely use some assistance, right? But I also do not see them, at their stage in their life, adding on to their homes. But I think, you know, there's all sorts of possible, possibilities. Someone might want to, you know, give their home to their, their children, and then have, you know, a place to, to scale down to themselves. So.
Or a caretaker. I mean, it might be a dwelling for a caretaker, or, I mean, there are a lot of different scenarios.
There are different scenarios. I'm just saying that, you know, I, I, you know, two that I know of nearby, I know this will, will do nothing for them, and yet, you know, they've been here their entire lives, and they could use a hand. So, so this is, you know, these are the things I've been thinking about, and, you know, that, things like that, and then just understanding the need, and knowing that there's some enforcement problems here, and problems with verifying. I just was thinking, you know, we should, and then hearing about what Patrick is interested in, and Liz, and she's right on our board, it just makes sense to me that we, that we work together on this.
Well, wouldn't the enforcement come at the front end if the person did take out a building permit? Wouldn't that be the signal that, well, what is this, first of all?
But it hasn't. Right?
Well, we don't, I mean, has it happened? We just didn't know? Or is it, I mean, yeah, if the building can be constructed out of sight, I suppose somebody could do it, but I don't know how many properties have that.
That size.
If you take the chance of starting to build something without a permit in open sight, I'm just saying that, doesn't that first level of, of?
It doesn't, you know, and that's what I, one of the things I looked into, it doesn't.
Doesn't trigger, not to?
It triggers initially, but then anything can happen after that. So.
If I can, I think what is being said is that you have the initial building, which the building permit's going to be issued for, and I think it was discussed last time. You know, the person that comes in says I'm building it as an in-law apartment, and then it ends up becoming a short-term rental. Once the building permit is issued, when you're dealing with single-family residency homes, unless there's an active permit, we don't have a right to come on that property. So that's where you get into some of these issues of enforcement after the fact.
I have a question for Mike Camals, if I could.
Go ahead.
Mike, it seems like we're dealing with two different issues here. We're dealing with people who want to supplement their income, who live here by building an accessory building. That's one issue. The other issue is people who are coming to town to buy real estate, like at the corner of Devon Road and Route 7, and it is nothing more than an Airbnb. And they are multiplying. Now, my question to you is, what is the procedure to verify that these are Airbnbs, period, and that they should be registered as such? That's all.
So while we have asked for everyone to submit an attestation under our current bylaw, for people to state that they're using it as a short-term rental, it's still difficult for us to, there's, there, there isn't a very strong enforcement mechanism. And this is true in most, almost every community that's dealing with short-term rentals. How do you go about it? How do you enforce it? You know, I've always been one that's, has stated that it should have been addressed in the building code, just like bed and breakfast, a hotel, or the rest, where if you're running something like this, then the building inspector, fire inspector, and other can come in and, and check it. The state, in its wisdom, has placed short-term rentals as single-family homes, which creates this issue.
So, and Mike, we talked about, even though the short-term rental companies are collecting the taxes, there isn't the possibility of monitoring the short-term rentals in town to that, to the DOR somehow, Department of Revenue?
Well, the Department of Revenue keeps track of who, who's paying, but they actually don't share with us the list. They'll tell us who's living, how many places are paying in the street, but not the physical address. If you want to get into true enforcement, some of the things that I know Patrick's looked into these, there's websites that will, you could pay, and they'll look up places that are advertising, and then you, then you get into enforcing who is, who isn't.
Which is what Great Barrington is doing.
Great Barrington's looking at that, and we'll see how, how that works.
Right.
Because it's still, it's still really, it's still really difficult. I'm wondering how they're going to manage it. You're dealing with a lot of people. I know Patrick's got some information on this. And, you know, how, how far do you want to go on it, is really up to the community.
Another comment from Hart, if you will, and that is, is that when is it that somebody sits down on the table and says it's going to cost the violator $200 a day because they're in violation of something that the Planning Board puts together, or the Concom puts together, or the Board of Select puts together? When is that going to happen, and how does it happen, Mike?
It's under, so we can do a non-criminal disposition, which is a ticket. The state allows us to charge $100 on a. allows us to charge $100 on a first offense, $200 on a second, 300 on a third, unless there's a specific set of laws that allow you to do more than that, which there are some under the wetlands protection that allow for greater fines. Once you get into fining an individual, you're fining them on a daily, you can fine them every day. But I'm, we're going to talk about this at our selectmen's meeting. But when you get into enforcement, what we do is we write those tickets. If somebody doesn't pay, you end up in court. So, you know, a good example is you end up in court over an excise, you're fining them, you're, you've, you've listed these fees, you go to court and the judge goes, are you going to pay your excise? Yes. Pay it within 10 days, we'll wipe out the fines. Okay. Boom. So it's not as clean as you, as it can be. But what it is, is we would start these non-criminal dispositions. Typically, we give a notice of anywhere from 15 to 30 days that they're in violation. Then you send them a warning letter that we're going to begin fines. That's usually between 15 and 10 days. And then we begin issuing the fines. And then if they don't pay, we end up in court. So, you know, you end up with problematic properties and others that this can be going on and each case is dealt with individually. So I do know that there are some that Ned's taken to court multiple times over debris, other things in their yards. And then within a year, he's back in court trying to enforce the same thing. So these are, these are the challenges around that. And that's why I, I truly believe it does belong in the building code. Because if you have a hotel that's not operating, they can be shut down for like fire hazards and other things like that. After, if it's a, a public health and safety issue to the point that there's people are being put at risk. So that, that's how fines, that's how non-criminal dispositions happen. And then there's also some enforcement mechanisms by the conservation that they can be assisted with DEP through enforcement orders and that.
So there's, there is, John, there is a section at the back of our zoning bylaw that addresses administration and enforcement, and you can take a look at that.
Yeah, I will. What I, the history shows that all across the board, whether it's CONCON or Planning Board, it hasn't happened. And I'm very glad to have heard from Michael as what the procedure is, because we will take that forward in our commission.
Yeah. And I will say that one thing that Patrick did champion and went to town meeting was the hiring of a consultant for the conservation to come, to assist with enforcement. And we're right now at the end of bringing on Mark Stinson and Dave Cameron, contracting with them to assist with, act as our agents and insist with, assist us with wetland protection and with enforcement.
That's great. Good. So, so Mike, question for you, could you?
I think Patrick has his hand up. He's had it up a couple times.
Okay. I just have a quick question for you and then I'll get to Patrick. So could you send me the, I mean, are you allowed to send me the, the table of uses in the zoning bylaws as a Word document?
Sure, I can add that to you.
You can do that. Okay. So Patrick?
I'm just going to make it perfect.
So your, your sound quality is, is pretty poor. Is there anything you can do to, at your end?
I was going to say, we could, it's the first that I've heard meeting, which covered my entire agenda.
You're really like, you're underwater. Your background is blurred and was anyone able to make that out? I wasn't.
Nope.
Okay, sorry.
I think he said, you've covered a lot of things we're doing at the selectmen's meeting on Thursday. I think that's what he said.
Okay. So, so what I'm thinking would make sense is, is that, I talked to Mike a little bit about this. And what we could do is, you know, coordinate with, Liz could be our representative. And we could coordinate with the select board on this. And we could move on to signs. And apparently, there's lots of other things that can, Cara can finish up the parking. And Mike is interested in doing a, in doing a landscape, what was the name of the plan?
Open, open space of recreation plan. So then we can go after park grants to.
Right.
Parks.
Right. So and Cara has a background, natural background for that. So there's, there's things she can work on. And we can, you know, I was thinking potentially, I want to hear from you all, move on to signs.
Quick question before we do.
Mm-hmm.
If, I don't know if the housing assessment is already planned to be put out, but I think the questions that go into that are going to be very important. So who, who would be putting those questions together?
So drafting surveys is definitely a skill. And we would be using someone like the firm that did the last survey to do that. It's, you know, you want to work with somebody who is trained and experienced in doing surveys.
Yeah. So just to speak on that, this is going before the select board on Thursday, so we haven't approved it yet. But if it is something that we would, similar to the MVP, we'd have community engagement, we'd have boards engaged, we'd develop the survey from it. We'd probably be looking for at least one or two off the planning board to assist in developing the process. And then from there, creating the evaluation and then moving toward a conclusion of what best fits Stockbridge that would assist us in moving forward. And, you know, the conversations we've already had, just briefly between Patrick, Liz was involved, Andrea from the Heat and Court, and June Wolf from Construct. You know, there's all types of things like the fair, fair housing rules and other things that we have to think of to make sure that whatever we're doing meets the goal. So probably one of the first things they're going to have to do is basically establish what our mission is, our goal statement. And then how can we best accomplish what we're trying to do for the community?
So Wayne, if this is something that you're interested in being part of, Michael mentioned too, from the planning board, that makes sense to me.
Would help if I could.
We haven't exactly said it yet. Obviously, we're getting ahead of ourselves because the board.
We're getting a little bit ahead, but.
But we would come back to the planning board and say, hey, here's what we're looking to do. We need people involved.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, it's, you know, it's a discussion and Nancy isn't here, but that just, you know, it's a discussion of the, of the full board.
So you want to set the ADU aside and then after we go through this other process, we'll decide whether we want to add or subtract from the ADU or just not do anything more with it?
I just, I want to do it in a coordinated way. And since the select board is doing this, is it, I mean, again, we're jumping ahead, they're meeting Thursday. But, you know, if this goes forward, I think it would be good for us to coordinate with them. So, you know, the more of a partnership you can develop, the better you are.
I think the big question here is, instead of worrying about the survey, is just the question of whether you guys are going to pause on the ADU.
Yes.
And make that a part of our analysis and that.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, too. That makes sense. There's no point in having two different.
That's how I.
Once again, yep.
All right. So do you need us, do you need a motion, Mike, or anything, or?
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't think you need a motion at this point. We'll just continue the ADU to the future once we have this plan.
Okay.
And then what we could do is work with Cara on looking at a couple of those other issues.
Okay. So we'll move on to signs if everybody's okay with that. And I will just, in the meantime, I'll tweak the zoning bylaw so that what we have existing is clearer for people. Okay?
Harry, as a sensor, do you have any of that kind of information? Like what houses have, you know, what houses have apartments or, you know, that?
Only if there's, you know, if Mike's or one of us in tandem with him go out to either inspect from a permit.
Uh-huh.
Or if we're doing a revaluation.
But there's not like a list of apartments in town or?
Only if, only if he's already knows.
ADU, okay. I don't mean short-term rental. I mean, like a, a real.
Yeah.
Mother-in-law apartment that somebody's really living there or something. Do you have that?
Yeah, if it exists, we have it, yeah.
Great. So are we, are we all set?
Okay.
Okay. All right. Any, anything else? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I second.
You didn't verbalize it.
You have to say.
All in favor?
Aye.